... meeting will begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is a festive time of year. We'll begin as we always do with our administrative remarks. And Ms. Culligan, how about getting us started?
I didn't mean anyone. Just a few items to mention. The Assistant Principal position at the high school has been posted with a closing date November 4. We advertise this position on all us New York State school boards, New York State Council of School Superintendents, and Education Board. And as of this afternoon, we have 76 applications. And Michelle and I are scheduled to meet with representatives from Sudin and Palco on November 28th. We will be discussing student field work on the secondary level.
Oh, thank you. And Ms. Carlson, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm doing well. Good evening.
Are you getting that special look about you now?
The weather's turning.
There you go.
Some budget news. Tonight we are being asked to approve the budget calendar for the 2018-19 school year. We just got news from the teachers' retirement system that they are projecting the employee contribution rate for next year between 10.5% to 11% of salaries. And this actually represents an increase from last year's rate, which was just 9.8%. That represents a 7% to 12% increase in the TRS contribution, and it's the first increase in three years. The anticipated budgetary impact is a negative $500,000. So it's not good news, but I just wanted to make sure that I got it out there and for those aware of it as we enter the budget season. I invited John Watson from Inside Engineering tonight to help with this part of the discussion. As many of you know, we've been contemplating renovations to our varsity baseball and softball fields. It's very complicated because, as you also know, we're on DEP wetlands and therefore subject to certain regulatory requirements and most notably a restriction on the amount of construction and renovation and earth movement that we're able to take on at one point in time. And I'll also remind everyone that because of this, we actually had to redesign the floor plan of CB Star so as to avoid a water pond, a retention pond. In addition, we also had to pull back on the scope of the paving work at JFK and also push back the timing of the paving work at JFK. So at this time, like I said, we've been contemplating the renovations to the baseball and athletic field and how they tie in with the other work that is included in the bond. And I also remind everyone that the renovations to the athletic fields was not in the bond. It was never included in any of the pre-bond discussions. It's a totally separate element. So at this point in time, we're asking our civil engineer, John Watson from Inside Engineering, to help us understand where we are right now with the fields and what would be required in order to get this work done timely. So, John? Yeah, please.
Thanks Victor, that was a good introduction. I'd just like to add that in order to... He's right, we had to phase the project so that we didn't exceed a certain disturbance threshold. And now with having to do JFK paving projects slated for 2018, if you want to add the field project into that, that's going to push us way over this disturbance threshold, which would require a New York City DEP stormwater permit approval. And that would require additional design work and additional construction of some type of stormwater improvements. And typically, if we have the ability to phase a project or to minimize a project or redesign a project to avoid this permit process, that's what we do because it saves obviously time and money. Based on the situation with the JFK project already being slated for 2018, like I said, and then this school project, the ball field project now is, now that you want to continue that in 2018, you're definitely over this limit. We looked at it several ways and there's really no way we could see to be able to separate or minimize one project to stay under this disturbance limit. So the bad news is, if you want to do both projects in 2018, you have to go for this additional permit. The good news is, we have already gotten a state DEC stormwater permit for the JFK parking lot work. So we've already done a certain level of stormwater improvements. To go from that DEC level to include the DEP stormwater approval is just an incremental increase. It's not a tremendous increase in work and construction cost. So that's one good thing. The other good thing is on the ball fields, that we believe that can be considered a redevelopment project under the New York City DEP regulations. Redevelopment projects have a different process through the DEP. It's a, I don't want to say streamlined, but there's, the design standards are less and you have to do less infrastructure. So once again, it's not jumping into this whole new world of a huge stormwater permit. What you're doing is getting a stormwater permit light, say. So it's not quite the full blown permit, but it is additional work, but it's not the big permit that we try to avoid. So as I said, I talked to Victor today. If you want to do both projects, that's fine. We just need to, you need to be aware that we're processing an additional permit for both the projects. And time-wise, we'd be cutting it close to getting it done by next summer. So if you do want to go ahead, we'd need authorization as soon as possible to get going right away. Our first step would be to meet with the DEP, sit down meeting, put everything out in front of them, and make sure that we're both, that we're understanding their regs, the way they interpret their regs, and that we can get this, you know, on track to be approved by next summer. It's typically a six to nine month approval process. And I think with cooperation from our, from us and DEP and really staying on it, I think it's reasonable to think we could get the approval for next summer.
Can I ask, what would be another option? So we're going to try to do that, get it all done?
You could just not do the fields until 19 or 20. Or not do the parking lot until 19 or 20.
Right. Okay. And the likelihood is that we could potentially get these other approvals?
Now, the problem, there's another problem here is that the way the DEP regs are set up, what they don't want you to do is purposely phase projects to avoid this permit. So even if you did separate them out, there's the ability that they could come back later and say, well, listen, we're going to retract and they could do this anyway. So we're in a gray area anyway, and without a physical sit-down with them, it would be hard to make the decision of what they would say. I would lean towards they're going to lump these projects together anyway. So my recommendation would be go ahead with both projects now, do the permit, put it all out there, and just get it done this year.
You mentioned treating the baseball and softball fields as a renovation. That doesn't require a permit?
It does. It's just a modified permit. It's a lesser permit than their typical full blown stormwater permit.
And do you think the fields would qualify?
Yeah, absolutely. Even though it might seem counterintuitive that all you're doing is regrading a field and lowering it and changing the grades around, and you're not cutting down trees, you're not paving anything, the DEP looks at disturbance area only. So if you remove the grass, expose dirt, move the dirt around, put grass back, that counts as disturbance. And the field project is four to five acres, the DEP threshold is two acres. So there's no way to, you have to cut, you have to, really can't do the field project with the parking lot project.
So does it make it easier to treat those fields as renovations?
Absolutely, yes. It's, redevelopment is the correct word. I'm just trying to be fair. It's much, much easier because you don't have to do, yeah, it's, the stormwater treatment is say a third, you know, a quarter to a third of what it would be in order of magnitude from what it would be for like a, what they call new construction permit, in both size and cost. So we definitely want to, and we do think it falls into that redevelopment category.
Thank you.
Yes?
Apart from our concerns with the DEP, there's another matter concerning costs. So we don't exactly have a blank check at this moment.
Exactly.
We will need to look at all options in terms of their costliness as we move forward.
Yes, and it's hard for me to, without that initial meeting with them, without understanding the level of treatment they want and what classification they classify these projects as, it's very hard for me to...
Understood.
Yes. My initial, what I will say is, my initial estimate, if we had to do full blown stormwater for all of these projects, is hundreds of thousands of dollars in mostly construction. I think it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay, that's the good news.
So that's, that's the best I can say.
And as far as the next steps, if they're looking to us, does it have to be an action on it? Does it just kind of go ahead?
Victor has continued dialogue around.
Yeah, it's not, no action is required at this time. We're actually going to request a proposal from Inside to perform this work with the understanding that they're going to go forward and schedule this meeting with the DEP ASAP here. Because it's important to start this conversation as soon as possible for any meaningful work to take place next summer. There's, you know, a third wrinkle in that we recently had our fields inspected by our insurance company, and they, their assessment of our fields was less than flattering. They did not use the word condemned, but they had significant concerns with the status of the field, which from our position, it seems that the safest thing for us to do would be to not allow anyone on those fields until they've been repaired, which, you know, throws another wrench into this mix because we now need to approach the DEP and hope that, you know, they'd be understanding of our situation, our predicament, that, you know, this is a field that's used by, you know, hundreds of children each year, and hope that that may have some influence on their ability to, you know, fast-track our approval and to get this work done in the spring. In all likelihood, the field would be shut down for the spring, in which case, you know, we would have to speak to Mr. Barardo and figure out where we would be planning our pains this spring.
And for this, we're just talking about the baseball?
Just baseball and softball field. But I mean, as, you know, as we're learning, this is evolving by the hour. So hopefully we'll have some more information as soon as we can get a seat at the table with the DEP.
Thank you all for your suiting.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Ms. Gosh, I'll send it down. Just one of your... Fine, thank you. I'd like to update you this evening on a couple of important items from our State Education Department. Test guides for the 2018 grades three through eight New York State math and ELA assessments have been released. So this is significantly ahead of schedule from, you know, compared to previous years. So these guides review the format of the assessments. They provide details as to what percentage of the standards are tested, and they also outline what rubrics will be used for which essays. So this is helpful when it comes to our instructional planning, not because we're teaching to the test, but because it's important that we're aligning our instruction to the standards. So as a reminder, the, these test guides will attach to, of course, the 2018 assessments, which reflect the common core standards, not the next generation standards, which were recently adopted by the state. The first administration of that assessment will be in the spring of 2021. Second item is, as I've mentioned previously, the testing duration for the three through eight assessments are being reduced from three days to two days. So as a district, we choose two days within that administration window to hold the assessments. And of course, we'll choose the same days for CB Star and for Wells. One concern of many that have, that pertain to these assessments are the field test questions. So what the state has said is that there will still be embedded field test questions, but only for session one, not for any of the constructive response questions. And also, the state will aim to release the assessment questions as close to June 1st as possible, which is, again, significantly sooner than it has been in the past. So these are some steps forward. It shows that the state is listening, and we appreciate it.
Hopefully. Thank you for that report, Ms. Gosh. Dr. Pedenmore, how are you doing tonight?
Great. Dr. Danblom, board trustees. A few comments to share with you. First of all, I want to thank you for supporting my attendance at the STEM Consortium. That was really important. It's 20 superintendents from around the country, faraway employees out of Idaho, who are really committed to building STEM program, programming that supports children, all children, to be ready for the 21st century opportunities that are somehow, in some shape or form or fashion, going to involve STEM-related skills. One of the things that I tweeted out that was, you know, very important to keep in mind, which is, and I quote, "Being competent in STEM fields at the end of the secondary school is the modern equivalent of being literate and numerate in the 19th century." You know, that, so that group of leaders that I would, I had a pleasure being with are really looking at that seriously and trying to make sure that we mobilize resources, our course offerings, our opportunities to increase the levels of offerings for all students is really critical. So more of that work will continue. And districts are, those districts that were represented are doing, you know, very similar work. Everyone's looking at, has some form of a strategic coherence plan. Everyone's looking at how to, you know, promote it and market it so that it isn't just something that sits on the proverbial shelf and, you know, and that ends the work around that. So that was really also important to see the commitment across, you know, a lot of different districts across the country involved in that. Today, Ms. Gosh and I had the pleasure of sitting down with four seniors. As you recall, all 287 are going to be interviewed in groups of about four or five, and it'll include Ms. Gosh and Ms. Hoiler. When they're available, obviously, they have a lot of things to do themselves, but when they're there and available, it's important. Students have a lot of things to say that we should pay close attention to. These four students have spent 13 years in the district, each one of them. They've either, you know, kindergarteners at Garden Street or at JFK, and their view of life is very different from ours. And it's very important because it will help to, you know, help us to continue to fuel the system with new ideas and new ways to respond to schooling that's very different from how you and I sat in desks, you know, many, many years ago. So we'll continue to have those interviews. We probably will be finished in about 30 weeks. But it's been a pleasure and it was an honor to be able to sit with them and listen to them. They're brilliant students, and we don't know them, sometimes we don't get a chance to ask them questions. And some of the questions that we asked them, for example, which we had, we indicated to parents in a letter maybe about last month, was, "What is your fondest memory of being a student of Mr. Central School District?" And the answers are amazing. I won't share them with you here, but over time, we'll pull together a list and make sure that you can see these. "How can we improve our education system?" was the second question. The third is, "Now that you're about to graduate, what recommendations would you make that would greatly improve the overall student experience?" And then, "What do you wish that you had been able to do more as a student?" So that was a wonderful way to spend time today with some of our graduates, our soon be graduates. Dr. Lynn McKay visited the district today. She's supporting their Teachers College Reading Writing Workshop. She's one of two superintendents that the project has hired to support and bridge the work between the campus of Columbia University and the individual school districts. So some of her work is going to be to help us to better identify those practices as we learn them too in the classrooms so that we continue to grow and improve upon that pedagogy that's so important to us at the K5 level. And she had very complimentary things to say about our school district and the classrooms and the students, and saw their level of commitment to these practices. Next week, on the 21st, a strategic coherence planning team will be engaged in learning walks. We started training tomorrow, so that, that protocol, which is actually developed by the UCLA School of Management, and is commonly used by educators. It's built for teachers. It's made for teachers so that they can, you know, engage in professional collaborative inquiry that involves visiting classrooms and studying reforms, the extent to which, you know, an initiative that they are committed to and have a lot of passion around is actually taking root and doing what it needs to do. So we'll be learning about that tomorrow, over the next couple of days, and then actually engaged in it. So that's very exciting. I hope that you all are able to come out on December 1st to the Festival of Cultures program sponsored by the Coalition of Communities That Care and the Cooperative, the partnership, I could never remember the name, CAP, that has collaborated to make this opportunity available to the district. It's a combination of food, dance, fun, and 30-minute workshops on a variety of topics. The Brewster Community Learning Center, through the help of Denise Con Harenton, as well as Donna Torello and Bonnie Palumbo are engaged and working with those groups to make sure that it's a really strong, wonderful program. And happy Thanksgiving to all of you next week. Have a healthy, happy, enjoyable time with your families.
That's a great segue. We didn't even rehearse it. I wanted to keep it brief and positive and peaceful, and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving next week with your loved ones and family. And to help us to be mindful, it's been a rough couple of three, four, or five weeks, but I want to be thankful and genuine in saying that in my heart, and I think I speak for the whole board, the administration, we believe we have a solid district here, listening to your initiatives, listening to your approach, interviewing, our exiting 287 seniors, getting their input. Those are all healthy things to do. And I'd like to remind us gently that there's a lot of healthy things going on, so please look for them, please echo them, call attention to them. Do not let the darkness swallow up all that you folks have built here. You're a strong team, you're a great team. I'm proud to be here, and I hope you'll ride the waves with us and get us to a brighter time. Have a great Thanksgiving, folks. Our students are here, welcome ladies. Thank you so much for joining us.
The Fall Drama Brighton Beach Memoir has had a successful run November 2nd to 4th. On November 8th, all high school choirs and a number of ensembles performed in the Salute to Veterans Concert. And next week, Democratic Congress is hosting a discussion on diversity for ELL students. The teachers are on board with us, so we expect like a good turnout for that.
On December 5th, during the high school faculty meeting, Democratic Congress will be facilitating an abbreviated version of the discussion on diversity for staff members. Eventually, Demo intends to host another large convention with voluntary participation that'll run all day. We hope that the ENL convention next week will get more of those students interested in this larger event. As for sports highlights, senior Eric Jacobson has qualified for cross-country states. Overall, sports are at a transitioning point. Tomorrow's sports awards concludes the fall season, and winter athletes will begin their season soon.
Thank you both, we appreciate that. And now we will move on for presentations, presentation, and discussion in diary is the Strategic Coherence Plan logo and Dr. Henning.
Thank you, Dr. Danblom.
Okay.
Just one second for us. This is a continuation of our conversation that has been happening for a little while in our Strategic Coherence Planning Team. And the purpose is to get to do the history of the, the work of the Strategic Coherence Planning Team, as well as to provide you with some information on the origins of a logo to be attached to that, proposed logo to be attached to that plan. Just as that chronology of events associated with the work of the Strategic Coherence Plan, 19 members met and convened for the first time on November 2015 to develop a plan that really outlined the 21st century skills that are important to all students in the Brewster Central School District. The plan was then adopted and approved at a March 2016 board meeting. Two teams started working in August 2016 to implement the plan. We streamlined eight of the, eight of the skills into five skills in collaboration with the schools. We defined the academic and social emotional skills that are embedded in the plan, and we discussed and developed a logo that we wanted to put forth as a proposal that symbolizes the 21st century learning outline in that plan. We went on, but on October, recently October 25th, the four principals, four teachers, six students, Michelle, Ms. Gosh, and I made a presentation to clarify the intent of that logo. The VOCs logo designer was also in the audience to share a similar work that's occurring in districts around the region. And there were nine people in the audience for that presentation. This year, we want to continue our focus on marketing and promoting the five academic and social emotional skills and therefore creating examples of how these skills are integrated into curriculum assessment, professional learning, learning environment. And those are the five areas that have been the focus since we began working. These 21st century skills that the team has been focusing on pretty extensively and taking those back to the buildings for further feedback and commentary have been critical thinking, collaboration, communication, perseverance, adaptability, and civic responsibility. In terms of the draft of a profile of a graduate, this is commonly work associated with districts engaged in this work. These are the definitions that the team came up with, looking at a lot of professional literature associated with the Partnership for 21st Century Learning that many districts have used as the well that they've drawn from to define these. But of the team itself, which is a team of about 46 people, are still working and have worked to refine these definitions so that there's not a confusion about what critical thinking means, for example, or collaboration, adaptability, civic responsibility, and perseverance. And these are, these will be the definitions and are the definitions that people are actually working with as they refine their curriculum or integrate and add this into their assessments assumes and so forth. And along with these, there'll be some kind of representation, because again, symbols are really important, and as you look around, the work done in a number of districts, there are, you know, gears, for example, are commonly used to associate critical thinking and other kinds of ways to imagine what it means to symbolize perseverance. So why a logo? Our first symbols of communication were scratch marks and caves. And symbols are really powerful tools to have, to help us to sort of shortcut, you know, and recognize the mission or vision or a set of beliefs that we might have. And that's simply what it is, a shortcut. We know these two commonly use symbols, and, you know, we may not all have favorable opinions of them, but we all recognize them. And so the Strategic Coherence Planning Team wanted to do that, wanted to find a way to associate a symbol with the Strategic Coherence Plan. Now, there was some initial concern that the symbol was replacing the rooster bear, and we've made a number of attempts to clarify that that is not the intention, and we obviously, you know, don't, you know, have any plans, never had any plans to change the bear. The bear is our beloved mascot. He is everywhere, or if you prefer to call her she, is everywhere. You'll see the representations on all of our athletic wear, our bear wear, Landers, websites, letterhead pencils, ID, rugs, stuffed animals, cafe tables, chairs, you name it. And that's where those logos, the bear, will remain. We need a way to show that we are no longer this image of public education, where we sit in rows and where that system represents educating young people for a system where they're not necessarily going to have to go out and think critically and solve problems and communicate and collaborate. There's actually no intent of collaborating because everyone's facing and looking at the back of other students' heads. We hope that there's, these are not representations in our district. There are some people who still are holding on to rows, but the learning has to look differently because we have a different economy. So the jobs that haven't, that didn't, that did not exist 10 years ago are these, and some people may not even know that these exist. An app developer, social media manager, ride-share drivers, driverless car engineer, cloud computing specialist, big data analyst, sustainability manager, YouTube content creators, and drone operators. These jobs didn't exist 10 years ago. In the classroom I just showed you could not have produced them. So what we do know is that the pace of change will never be as slow as it is today. We learned that, we've been the administrators during a visit, a field trip this summer to a multinational global company that has spent a lot of time looking at staying ahead of the trend and being constantly reinventing themselves and trying to make sure that they have created 21st century learning environment. And one of the people who toured us around and talked to us made this statement, and it had a profound impact on me, because it very much is about, "A pace of change now will never be as slow as it is today." And our students are in this environment where they're going to have to, you know, as 21st century learners, and the average student, you know, whether you're 12 or 13 years old, you're going to live well to the end of the century. And for some of our students, our little fifth graders today, who are showing, fifth graders, our five-year-olds were showing me their writing, and six-year-olds were graders, or five-year-olds, who are showing their writing, and six-year-olds who are showing their writing, they're going to live into the 22nd century. So there's truly, we don't even know what those jobs are, and many of them will look very different from anything that we can possibly imagine. So a lot of the work that we're doing is preparing for a future that we don't really have a clear definition for, but we do have a sense of the skills that our young people have to, will need to be successful in that environment. They will be judged in work, life, and college, not on what they know, but what they can do with what they know. And that's pretty universal, no matter what you look at and what you read, you're going to see this reiterated over and over again. Ten to fifteen jobs, it could be many more jobs, that they're going to have in a lifetime, and many of them don't exist. They're going to have to engage in complex problem solving that requires a lot of critical thinking and creativity. They're going to have to operate in this highly networked environment where there's constant interactive communications that's needed. I learned from our seniors that they don't use email. So many of them never got the email that I sent to them. I didn't take offense to them, they just don't use email. And yet, we think that that's the primary way to communicate. They don't function that way. And so that's one of the disruptive changes that we have to respond to. And that may be something that we have to look into in the coming year, that we collect phone numbers of students so that we can text them, because that's how they communicate. They will encounter massive amounts of information that they're going to have to make sense of, and that they're going to have to leverage to remain competitively employed. They are functioning in this creative economy that's also known as the innovation era, where there's going to be a constant flux of change and a need to continuously improve. Yet, there'll be no spectators in the 21st century. You can't sit on the sideline and wait for the rotary phone to come back. It's just not coming back. So this logo is a way for us to symbolize, like the scratches in the cave, what we believe about the, you know, how this system is committed, how the Eastern School District is committed to making sure that we constantly are reminding ourselves, our parents, our children, what it is that we believe that we should all teach, that we should teach our children in terms of their thinking skills. Now, content is important, but it's what you do with the content that's one of those critical thinking skills. So we thought about what would be important in a logo. We wanted three children to represent the three levels of education, elementary, middle, and high school. We wanted some way for the symbols to represent, or the images to represent embracing the future, you know, with confidence and hope and anticipation, as well as children leaping forward into, or taking flight into the world. We also wanted a globe to symbolize preparation for global citizenship. So this is what we came up with. And it wasn't 100% universally accepted by every member of the group, but we talked about it, we revised it, we looked at it in many different ways, but thought that how could we be a learning organization? The one idea that we were committed to is that how could we be a learning organization and not have children in a logo? That that would be something that would be woefully unacceptable. And that, again, this is going to, the idea is that it's a part of any place that we talk about the Strategic Coherence Plan and the skills associated with the plan, so that it's a shortcut for people that when they see this, that somehow we want them to think of 21st century learning, problem solving, perseverance, or even if they don't, if you can't think of all five of those skills, that somehow represents, the system is committed to making sure that we're not preparing children to sit in rows for those jobs that didn't exist ten years ago. It's available, obviously, in any, you know, black and white, this is not reproduced, we don't reproduce letterhead, we don't print letterhead and put in boxes and store it away, we don't print envelopes for this. This is all digital. This will all be a part of our website, a part of anything that we have to share with teachers so that they're aware of these. But we are also mindful, as, you know, the digital citizens ourselves, that the goal is not to print things, but to have them available to share digitally. In terms of usage, one example that might help us to see what the possibility is, to take the current image of work that's happening, or digital representations, and you see our Brewster bear, and you see the logo there. It could be any place on this, but that's the idea, that whenever we show examples of the work of the Strategic Coherence Plan, we want to show, you know, we want people to look at that and say, oh, that's what they're doing, that's what's different about the system. That's how we're, you know, we're educating our youngsters to function in this environment where most of the jobs that they're going to have don't currently exist. But as I said, that's one image, but it will always be that our Brewster bear is somewhere on this, on the representation, because again, that's part of our identity and part of what we're proud of. So how can the board trustees help our Strategic Coherence Plan? We hope that you'll support the promotion of the logo through, if anything, a one-year pilot. I know there's still a lot of concern about it, but just to try it and see how it works, and then if it doesn't work, yank it. Support with the SCP team, look at that, the use of the logo within the one year, in terms of how it helps educators, parents, students, and the community members to embrace this common symbol that represents our commitment to 21st century learning for all students. And then engage with Envision Brewster, which is doing a lot of the work to revitalize the village, and to let them know what our efforts are, and also, you know, as part of the marketing. And as I mentioned earlier in my comments about the STEM consortium that I'm a part of, with other superintendents from around the country, districts have to think of themselves as potentially becoming extinct. And we don't, we don't think of ourselves that way. And that it requires efforts on our part, you know, we're not only, you know, looking at the people who are already in our seats and families who are already in the district, you know, a district does not, you know, survive if you don't have more people coming in and having a reason. So why should we choose JFK to enroll our children? You know, why should we, you know, pay our taxes or select to build a home or establish a family in the district? They're looking at us, they're looking at ways in which we're representing and aligning to prepare new children for this future that's been described and that the SCP team talks, you know, talks regularly about. So that's basically where we are and why there's a belief that we do need a shortcut to symbolize what it means to, in the district, to prepare children for success in this century. Thank you.
Thank you. What a coincidence that that seemed to be our first action item. Did you get a chance to go into that? It's got to be even further.
Why don't we ask a question?
As it turns out, we're gonna just do it. That's okay. Learning, good. So we move down to action items, and the topic du jour, approval of Strategic Coherence Plan logo. I'll take a motion in a second, and then the discussion will begin. I have a motion by Mary Kay, and Kristen seconded, and let the discussion begin. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You gave examples of where the bear would stay, it said the website.
Everywhere.
So where is the logo, the proposed logo, going to be used?
Anywhere we describe examples of how we're integrating those skills into curriculum, assessment, instruction, professional learning, the learning environment, so any place that we're just, we share the definitions of the five skills, that's where you're going to see the logo, because we want people to associate that with the work, so that they don't necessarily have to remember the definitions, but they have to remember that we're engaged in the work.
So it would be representative of that work?
That's it.
Okay.
What about like the eBackpack letters from the district?
Doesn't have to go there. We, the only time we'll use that is if the eBackpack letter describes the skills. If we're talking about the SCP, we want that, we want to use that logo every time we mention that, the skills. Because right now, SCP doesn't really mean a lot. You know, there aren't a lot of people, in spite of our efforts, who really know what the, you know, what the plan is, have looked at the plan, know where to find the plan on the website. I mean, that group of forty-six who are, you know, meeting regularly and talking about and defining, go back to the schools, but then, you know, if you don't have a commitment, in terms of you're at the table, you don't necessarily remember, you know, all the details. And we want to be able to go back to like a simple, you know, a simple symbol that people can just fixate on and remember and say, oh, they're doing this work. Or that this is what the system is doing to prepare, and that's what, you know, others who might be looking here, you know, looking at the district and saying, I wonder what they're doing about 21st century learning. But that would be also a message internally as well as externally.
So it would almost be a flag to say, oh, this particular picture, or this particular set of words is going, it relates to the SCP, relates to the logo, and that would be it.
Right. And these are some examples, and we'll have examples of the various skills around. So everywhere you'll see these skills, for example, these definitions.
You'll see the logo.
You'll see the logo. You'll see, and that, and we don't expect people to look at that. It's not the way that, you know, these kinds of changes occur. You don't see a list of, you know, describing Nike. There's no, there's no need anymore, or a list to describe McDonald's. You know, but, and there are a lot of examples of those kinds of symbols, but you, but, and yet, we want people to know that this exists and to wonder about it and say, ah, looks like they're kind of preparing children for the 21st century in some different kinds of ways that maybe we may not see readily, or may not know, or we're not at meetings, or we're not involved in that way, or, you know, or their lives are busy, and this is a way for us to say, this is what we're doing with our time.
You mentioned, you don't have to ask what Nike means anymore. I was at a, and I can't, in five minutes, can't explain, a two-hour presentation at the Educational Policy Leadership Program, but they talked about schools now having to market themselves because we're in competition with the privatization of education and as a public...
Even charter schools.
Yeah, charter schools. And they're in competition for funds that free, appropriate public education should be getting. So when someone sees the McDonald's symbol, you know, if you have a desire to go to McDonald's, you know what that is. Right now, we're in the process of learning what the logo means. There's gonna come a time when people can say, oh yeah, Brewster, 21st century, that's... And when I heard this speaker, you know, again, speaking for two hours about the need for public schools to say, we're more than the test score, we're more than the address, we're doing great things in the district, that's what this, that's what I see this as, is that...
Yes.
Am I putting it all together?
You are. And I think, you know, I learned from some of the superintendents that I was with this past week, that some of them really do have to market aggressively because they have a lot of charter school competition. And with, you know, with the charter schools, it's not a benign movement when a charter school comes into a community, they do draw from the very same dollars that we need, you know, to keep our system vibrant. So on top of that, I mean, people do choose, they're choosing, making some choices. If they have a choice to buy a home in Westchester or buy a home, you know, here in Brewster, like what's, what are some of the things that they look at to make that decision? They look at the public school system.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Do most of our neighboring school districts have logos at this point?
Various kinds of logos. It's a combination generally of a mascot and a logo, or that they rebrand it completely. And whether we see it around in the Putnam or Westchester area, it's happening all over. So there are degrees of it that are very near us, because not everyone has a Strategic Coherence Plan that they're implementing, but those are the conversations that they're having. And when, you know, if you look at, you know, examples of advertisements, you know, in various districts, you do see the mention of a Strategic Coherence Plan as being kind of the focal point of moving a district forward. And some image, that's typically an image that suggests that, that's a shortcut in a sense to the vision and the mission.
There was a mention of a one-year pilot program, which I think is the first time I've heard that, so I wondered exactly what that means.
That means that there, that's in recognition of some hesitation that people have about what it's going to be used for, and rather than not moving forward, let's give ourselves a year and see ourselves. And if we don't like how it's used, then you abandon it. If it isn't promoting our Strategic Coherence Plan, if it isn't advancing us as a system toward 21st century learning, if it isn't helping everyone to like have on their lips, you know, a way to describe what it is that we're doing, if it isn't making our district a district that, you know, stands out, then pull it.
And if that's the case, then I would make the suggestion that, you know, if we're using the SCP here and we're really implementing it and applying it across the district, then I would suggest that if we adopt this logo, that we go ahead and put it everywhere where people can see it, so people can get used to it, and not just, you know, like you were saying, an eBackpack. Put the bear and the logo up there so people can see it. That would be my suggestion, so people then can say, okay, I like it, I don't like it, and then in a year, we have a good understanding of where we are with it.
And we could meet people halfway, you know, the people who feel, still feel that, oh, something's underway, there's another motive here. Let's see. You know, let's see by doing it, and then you're the ones who have to make the final decision on whether it stays or not. It's not in my hands.
And you mentioned, you know, emails are no longer being used by students, so we have to adjust. One of the things in the Strategic Coherence Plan, as we've all seen, most of us for the last few years, civic responsibility is new. That's, I don't want to say it's a new buzzword, but we're seeing that need. So we showed our flexibility and adaptability, and it's part of our Strategic Coherence Plan. Same thing, I mean, this to me is a nice cushion and, you know...
So one of the things that just keeps spinning around in my head, and I think from where we started, with the initial introduction of the idea of the new logo to where we are today, we've come a long way, with a lot of the presentations, explaining it, but one of the things that just kind of keeps coming back to me is that our, one of our district goals for the year and our board goals is community relations, and building those relationships, the communication with the district. And I guess for me, I just still kind of go back to this logo, and there were two issues. One, getting the buying of the need for a logo, and two, what is the logo? And I think the idea, you know, as you've explained it, what is the logo, why should we have one, to have that thing that connects us to the work we're doing, it makes sense, I get it, I'm there. But I still kind of feel like this could be a way, and it's not to knock the work of the committee that's been, that got us to this point, that was on the original one. So I'm fully supportive of the direction. I just think that it could be a way for us to involve the community on a greater scale to come up with a logo. I mean, and I know that this is what was worked on and agreed upon by the forty-plus people representing students and community members alike. But I guess I just think that this is such a big thing that, I don't know, it just, it still sits with me that I think that there could be a way that we could work at, you know, maybe taking the year, since like you suggested a pilot that, taking the remainder of the year and having whatever, some sort of community outreach. We haven't figured that out. We still, as a group, haven't figured out, how are we doing that communication piece besides the usual ways, which are, you know, the eBackpack. It doesn't get to half the community, parents who have their last graduate, you know, how are we communicating with them? There are people who are still interested in what we're doing here, but there's become a disconnect that I've noticed. And so it sits with me, how are we connecting with the rest of the community?
But I think this is a good way to communicate what we're doing with the SCP. My only concern is when we task a committee to do something, and then we throw out what they've done and bring it back to another committee. No, well, because if we're gonna go out, you know, then at what point do we say, okay, now we're satisfied? But this aside, you know, then we should have a committee to discuss the logo for the yearbook, because there's a picture every year, and a committee to discuss what the letterhead looks like at JFK versus the letterhead at CB Star... Like, I'm saying, like, at some point, we're getting, we're in the weeds.
I don't think so, because this is an overall symbol, and committees are all advisory, there's no knock on the work that's done, but the purpose is that, look at the work we already do. I mean, we can't do everything. So you do set up committees to do the piece of, you know, policy, to do the different pieces. We don't even need a policy committee, we could convene and do that work also. But we create the committees for those reasons. And so, you know, they're advisory, and it's not to negate the work at all, it was advisory. And plus, being part of the original committee, the logo was never part of the original discussion. You know, the other pieces of the work were, that came out of the year-long work that maybe we need a symbol to recognize the work and let's go forward with this idea. So it is something that's being recommended to the board for consideration. And I'm saying, you know, I don't know, I just, I feel that, you know, we've had to do a lot of, it's become very clear through this process that we've been doing, going backwards in terms of getting this message out. And I take responsibility as a foreperson, that from the first instance of information that we got, right there, we probably should have gone to the public, you know, as a whole, and said, this is something that's under consideration, the work that's being done by our Strategic Coherence Plan. by our strategic coherence planning committee. You know, so I just want us to get better at the way we communicate the work we are doing, because it's, it ends up being such a negative backlash, when it shouldn't be, it should be a positive growth directional thing. And so I'm just trying to figure out a way to bring the community on a greater scale. And, I don't know, just.
Well, I think, and you, you pointed out a few different things, one of which I was gonna mention during board remarks, which was the list that we put together last year about the different agencies and groups in town. And that's, I'll, I'll kind of hold off on my comment for that, but in terms of how to engage those groups, like the Elks, the VFW, all those groups. Because I think it is important, I think you're absolutely right. But I think in, in what you were saying, you kind of said it yourself, there was 46 people that sat around tables and came up with and narrowed it down to this piece. That's a pretty sizable representation. I, I have faith that they went through the process and the protocol to come down to this logo. I think at this point, my personal opinion, we have talked about this ad nauseam. I'm just gonna come out and say it, and I don't mean to be blunt, but we have talked about this logo so much now, I think at this point, we just have to vote from our heart, figure out if you, if it's a yes vote or a no vote personally, and go from there, and give it a year, if it's a yes vote, and see where it takes us. That would be my suggestion. But I think at this point, we, we don't, we just need to maybe move forward.
I mean, I have to say, I do agree with Kristen. We have spent a tremendous amount of time and energy talking about a logo that really isn't talking about a lot of the other things we need to talk about. You know, there's a lot of other issues going on, you know, within the district, and, and we're really talking about our students. And this conversation is, yes, it's, it's about what we're teaching our students, but it is a year, which is a new thing. I mean, I, you know, because I'll be honest with you, I, I was never a, a big fan of how this logo came about, you know, and, and again, you know, part of it was, you know, yeah, maybe because I wasn't on the committee, whatever, I'm not gonna go there, I'm not gonna waste all that time about that. But it's a year. So that's, you know, and the community has, has an entire year to weigh in if they so choose, yea or nay. They're gonna talk to us, they're gonna tell us, you know, whether they like it or not.
Right, correct. I think the one feedback that you're gonna get out is, if we stay with having it as a pilot, we're gonna get that feedback. The community is gonna tell us what the direction we should take going forward as a better practice. So I think if we take it to that direction and go with the one-year pilot, we'll get that feedback. I just, you know, that's just my opinion. I think the logo as well, based on the presentations you presented tonight, and the definition that the five criteria that it has, it clearly states what we're, what you're trying to vision out of the logo. So I think we just have to really trust it, do the one-year pilot, and see what we get out of it.
And I think a way to gauge the public's reaction at or close to that year in some way, whether it's, you know, an E-backpack, fill it out, put it in a box in front of Wells or whatever. But, you know, I will say that I think the reaction to the logo was underestimated, which is fine. You just spoke about how important logos are, and the bear is important to Brewster, and we have tried to address that concern by the, the public. And I think when the people who stayed after the town hall meeting, when we discussed the logo and you explained it like you did just now, a lot of the community had a better understanding. So I just think the explaining and the rollout, we've all learned, could have been done better, but I think part of that was an underestimate, underestimating just a reaction to a change.
That's true.
But that said, the district can't keep, keep talking about it, there's so many more important things that we should talk about.
I mean, and this could conceivably bring it flush out a better idea from the community. We don't know what, what the year's gonna bring.
Yeah, I mean, and as the skills evolve, I mean, you know, again, these are, this is not like just pulled together from not a lot of study of those skills. So there's been a lot of conversation and deliberation, so, but if the community wants to engage in that same level of rigor, I think they absolutely should be, you know, bringing some other suggestion to the table.
We can even look and do it before we check in, you know, do like a survey every three months, you know, tap the community, see what they, what they think, every three months till we get to that year. And then we can put it all together and see what's favorable, what's not favorable.
We can even, you know, you know, it's hard to know like exactly how to get to the community, and, but I think one of the things that, that, that we recently spoke about was, you know, convening focus groups. So members of the board plus members of the district staff go out to different parts of the community. You know, that's really where we can get some information, and from people who might not ordinarily come, or people who don't have children in the school district, which are also, are, I mean, that's about, you know, the other half of the, the taxpayers in the district. You know, there are probably, there are more of them who don't have children in the school district than those who do have children in the school district.
I have something to say, I think we need to run the board.
Wait, I'm sorry. We have to allow public comments, if you can just hold off one more minute or so. Does this suggest that maybe for this piece that we allow just some comment before we take an action? I know that we're, normally toward the end, we have public comment, but I think that we could allow just for comment with no response, just in this particular, we've done that. Right, does everyone just let it until the end? There are people who did show up specifically for, thus so for us to take action, I think. It's not something that's a discussion of action next week, there are people that just want it really heard.
I mean, I, I defer to you and Steve on that, I do. Personally, though, I feel like there have been significant opportunities for public voice to be heard. And it's not that I don't want to hear anyone, but I, I defer to you, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it really doesn't, if you like them, then that's fine, either way.
It's up to you.
I mean, I know we've done it at times in the past, but I would strongly suggest, you know, more than two minutes.
Sure. Okay, so in the interest of doing just that, because if you make your remarks later in the evening, the vote will have been taken, and you'll feel like your, your voice wasn't heard. So have a, have a stand at the podium, introduce your name, please, and follow the two-minute rules.
Okay, I'll track you, please. My name is Mary Hannah. The community, I really would like the board to really consider voting this, because the community, a small portion of us are on a Facebook group, and I have 160 at least signatures that are against this logo. It doesn't represent Brewster, it's not Brewster, it doesn't, when you look at real estate or anything else, this is gonna say Brewster. This isn't gonna say we're teaching our children 21st century strategic learning. We're going to teach our children, teach our children. We don't need the logo to stamp that to teach our kids. And again, if you're looking for real estate outside as a representative, this doesn't say, oh my God, that's Brewster, I wanna live there. Well, this is what they're doing. And again, if we need more signatures to stop this particular logo, then that's what we're prepared to do. We're prepared to go door-to-door, senior citizens, stand outside, call backers, whoever needs to be. That's what this Facebook page says, that, you know, a small portion of us are ready to go let everybody who's not in our group have a voice. Because you guys aren't, and I don't mean everybody as a whole, but the community feels left out. They were slighted, they weren't informed, this was just, boof, here you go, here's a logo, choke it down, he's through, we're gonna do this. And that's where the community feels slighted. So there is a disconnect with the community and the board, and with the students. The students don't want this logo. The students don't like it. I could have rallied in the whole football team, they all would have been here. They don't wanna play under this logo. They don't feel that this represents them. So please, consider before you do this, reach out to the community and to the students, because they're the ones that have to represent. Thank you.
Alberta Cosmo. I just simply, I don't have a problem with a logo. And I listened, Valerie, to what you said, powerful message. I don't see a powerful message in this. I don't see where it represents civic responsibility, adaptability, perseverance, the five of them. I don't see where that's what this shows. I have absolutely no problem with the bear and the logo, but I really don't see that this logo shows what we as a district want to show, that we're doing 21st century education. And also, this is something that's going to be, could be with us for years. That's my comment.
Any comments from the board at this stage?
Just to clarify, the, the vote then will be for the logo as a pilot?
One year.
And the sports teams will not be playing under-
Under the logo.
As we said, we've said numerous times, it has nothing to do with athletics, nothing.
They still have the bear to play under.
The bear will be wherever the bear is, lanyards, toys, towels, laces, you know, you know, everything that it currently is on, this is not going to replace that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cecilia Sotodano. You guys mentioned about doing a survey, correct? Yes? And that's gonna cost us funds?
No, I don't think we talked about survey.
Like, about survey, having it out after three months or whatever, seeing what everyone's adapting. How about doing the survey prior to even putting out the slogan? Wouldn't that be actually better? Get the community's feedback. Before putting it out?
I think part of the proposal that's in this action item is to suggest that if the action item is passed, that activity would be part of the one-year-
Right, but I'm saying, prior to putting this out, asking them the survey of, how do you feel about this one versus this one? Prior to Peyton doing all the costs of changing everything.
But again, this is digital, this is digital.
Well, digital, so someone needs an IT, has to upload that.
But that's like everything else, it's like a photo, that's not additional, additional cost.
I'm just suggesting asking everyone first.
Okay, so let's get one question out of the way first, that is, whether you agree or disagree, the board here now, yea or nay, on the approval of the strategic coherence plan logo, which means a one-year trial period? Are there very clear on the stigma? All those in favor? All those, all those opposed? Count with six, one. Okay. So we'll do, a year's worth of field testing. Action item number two, the approval of service agreement with Panorama Education School Climate Survey. Huh, who's doing that one?
That would be me.
Okay, great.
Just as I mentioned earlier that I'm making sure that I talk to lots of students and get their feedback about the school district, we also, as part of that effort, need to gain information from every secondary student as well as eventually every student in the intermediate school. We wanna know, what is their experience as a student in the district? How are they, are, how are they treated based on how they look, or speak, or, or where, what their national origin is? And this data then is benchmarked against about 6,500 school districts as a way of indicating, is this something abnormal, or is this, are we similar or related to other school districts with regards to how children feel about, you know, being treated fairly in our school district, how teachers treat them, do they feel like they belong, do they feel as though they're cared for? So this is a one-year effort to really get, use benchmark data from other districts that also use Panorama, and the other districts are Chappaqua and Elmspur and White Plains, I believe, and that many more districts are using these kinds of surveys to be able to ascertain from their student body, information that then we can turn around and use to improve upon situations before we have something that occurred that we don't, we're not even aware of, because we're not asking the children.
Okay, take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Glenn, thank you, Sonya. Questions or comments from the board? Yes, ma'am?
What kind of, just kind of generically, what kind of questions? Because I know we already have, not surveys, I hate to use the word, but I know we already have our pulse on certain types of things in the district through possibly COB and other things we're doing. How does this one differ?
Well, we don't have any survey data, I mean, survey mechanism for COB or a ruler. So this, a school climate survey does, gets at all of that, the social, emotional experiences of students, as well as, you know, how they, you know, you know, do they feel smart, do they feel intelligent, do they, are they feel challenged in their classes? So it's that, a balance of information that we don't ask any other place. We're not asking that.
They would take it themselves.
They would take it themselves. So we would push it out to them, they would have their own login, they could do it on their Chromebook, since all of our children, certainly from six through 12, have a Chromebook, takes about eight minutes for them to take it.
What grade is it?
We'll start with six through 12, and then pick up the third grade. Third and, third, third, fourth and fifth. And it's very valuable information, you know, as we consider, you know, programs and as we consider initiatives that we're wanting to spend, you know, resource and time on, you know, students are telling us a different, you know, telling us something that we hadn't anticipated, we need to pay attention to them.
Do you know what, what types of questions will they be asked?
Questions about, you know, how do you know, do you, you know, how often does a teacher, you know, call on you? You know, who's, you know, how, you know, are you greeted when you come into the school? Or do you hear children making disparaging comments, or, you know, they won't use disparaging, but using derogatory terms to refer to you? Are you bullied? You know, do you feel as though you have access to, you know, technology? Lots of those types of questions are, are basis of the school climate survey. And these are the same questions that, again, 6,500 other school districts are, have, have used. So when we look at our data, which is the important thing, which is why we, we're choosing not to use Google Form or Survey Monkey, you have no benchmark data. You have no way to know whether you are, what, you know, how, where are you on velper in relationship to other districts? So that's really important information, you know, for us to have.
Would the students take it, like, beginning of, like, now, at the end of the year?
We could, we could get it as many times as we like.
And because it's within our district, it's protected under our privacy, so no one's allowed to-
No one would gain access to it.
Not just gain access, but can anyone request access?
No.
That's under one of our policies?
It's like, yeah, it's, it's similar to grades and progress reports, that it would not be information that they could obtain, because they've been down this road with, you know, you know, people who might want to obtain this information for reasons that that probably were not justifiable.
I figured that was the answer, but it's funny.
I'm really still on one's, one or two, but I posted, would you ask the kids questions like, do you feel like you're learning how to persevere through difficulties?
Yes. That's one of the social, emotional components of the survey. And there, there are about five different sections, and again, it doesn't, it takes about eight minutes for the students to take it. But these are pretty, these are vetted questions, they're reliable, they are valid, they've been, you know, psychometricians have developed them, they've been, you know, piloted and so forth, in terms of, of test, I mean, of field testing, so that they are legitimate questions that, that answers have been given to, that, that students have answered, and the data that we have access to, as, you know, because we would be using Panorama, we would not have access to in any other, in any other way. We would not be able to benchmark the results.
And are we allowed to, to, can't think of the word, make the questions more specific to Brewster or towards our five sets of-
There are some questions, we can customize, right? There are some questions that we can customize relative to some information that we've gotten from parents and others about certain, you know, experiences that children are having, even things that children have, have, have said about their experiences in, in any place, I mean, a number of places in our district, not just the high school or Wells, but it's, you know, we have no other mechanism for obtaining this information because we're not asking those questions.
Will there be a retention cycle on this as well?
It's ours.
Questions? Any other comments or questions? Seeing, actually, do we, do we pass this as a motion?
Yes.
We had a motion.
Seeing no more questions or comments, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Action item number three pertains to the approval of the budget development calendar. That's your thing, Mr. Carlson.
So each year, we ask the Board of Ed to adopt a budget calendar, which outlines the timeline of all of our budget presentations to the, to the community, as well as certain deadlines that the state has. Specifically, the state budget is due on April 1st each year. I mention that because the date that we have scheduled for the adoption of our budget by the Board of Ed is April 10th, which is a pretty short term after the deadline for the state's budget. So hopefully, we don't have any surprises this year. Hopefully, they're on time, as they have been traditionally for the past four to five years. Let me rewind all the way back to February 27th, which is our first budget presentation. We typically present the fixed cost and revenue portion of the budget. March 13th is our budget follow-up, and we typically present the instructional portion of our budget, and also personnel and enrollment projections. March 27th is our budget follow-up, that we present the superintendent's proposed budget. And again, April 10th is the Board of Ed budget adoption date. There's also, you know, numerous requirements in terms of reporting to the state that's laid out in the, in the budget calendar, including the property tax report card that we have to submit to the state, and that also gets posted in the, in the general news and also in the front row. The budget vote, the all-important budget vote is May 15th, 2018, and then the acceptance of the budget vote is on Tuesday, May 27th.
Next, Mr. Carlson. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Move on now to your consideration of the approval of Cold War Veterans Exemption Extension.
Yes, this was presented to the board at the October 24th meeting. It's an extension of the Cold War Veterans Exemption that the board had already passed back in February of 2017. New legislation allowed school districts to make this exemption permanent. The initial legislation had a 10-year limit. The new legislation allows it to remain permanent as long as the homeowner remains in the home. So there's no additional cost, it's just extending this beyond its 10-year life. There are 46 and 17 parcels in Southeast and Patterson respectively, that qualify for this exemption out of a total of 9,415 parcels.
Okay. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you again, Glenn and Diane, coming to this side next time. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Action item number five concerns the approval of an overnight wrestling trip to the Eastern States Classic at Sullivan County Community College in Lauchel Drake, New York. Always a big item on their schedule.
I can take this one. Is that right? So we have one student who has qualified for this prestigious tournament. Actually, last year, he also qualified and won it, which is a significant accomplishment. So there's parent transportation and parent chaperone along with the, along with the coach.
It's been a very important piece of building this program, which has grown enormously in the past few years. Take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Mary Kay. Kristen, I told you to come back to that side. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? We're off to Sheldrake, New York. All right. Last but not least, it is, gosh, how are those policies doing?
The volume is decreasing.
It's never ending. You keep saying that.
Oh, jeez.
So these policies have been through the Policy Committee, one which we discussed last, last meeting, so we put them forward for your approval.
Okay. So long as we're plodding along. We'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of the approval of policies after mention. That is, gosh. Carrie and Sonia, you are supporting this, in the first and second. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The policies continue. Consent agenda. We've had that in the package to review. We'll take a motion, please, this time, Mary Kay and Kristen, thank you both. Questions or comments from the board concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Remarks? How remarkable are you folks feeling tonight? There you go, a little bit of levity.
A little bit. Steve, with your permission, I'd like to talk about, you were at the West Pot Board of Directors and Legislative Action Advocacy Committee meeting.
When was that anyway?
Oh, that, I don't remember.
Last Thursday.
They're all just kind of rolling into each other. So I was, I spoke to Stacy, the program director, and she, from West Pot, my name was on as the legislative representative from Brewster, but she confirmed that anyone's invited to go to the Board of Directors meeting and the LAC. So when I get the notices, I'll share them out to you all, because it's a fun night. A couple of things that was shared, and Steve, I'm going to ask you if I misstep, please correct me, because...
Good thing I took my jar off tonight.
There you go. So one item, the SED...
State Education Department.
Yeah.
I got that one.
Got one on.
All right, go ahead.
Through the ESA reporting, there was a section on the website that they were asking for student data. And that was raising a lot of questions, like, why were they asking for this data? And it wasn't mandatory, it was optional, but people were filling it in. So the person who's on West Pot, who's the advocate there, brought it up to Nita Lowry, the Congresswoman.
That's right.
And never seeing action move so fast within 48 hours, that bullet section was removed from the website. And he has never seen anything move that quickly. So there was something, not that it was inappropriate, but there was something that was very, you know, just put it up there and just ask for it, and people were filling it in, but they shouldn't have been filling it in, it was a student privacy issue. So we were very excited that, he was very excited that she...
So the background of that is in bloom.
Oh, thank you. In bloom, that's what it was.
Yes, so, I'm grateful to see that this is a circle back to that.
Yeah, I think she left it.
But, so in bloom was a huge issue, a data privacy issue. And it left a bad taste in everybody's mouth. So Frank Schnecker, who's from Ossning, he's on your board for BOSI, he's on the Ossning board, he's on West Pot, very quickly brought this to Nita Lowry's attention. She being a veteran in Congress knew just what to do, and set the ship aright.
So student privacy is of utmost importance on every level.
It still is.
Yep. Next, they're going to be sending out, West Pot is going to be sending out resolutions to school boards. They're going to draft something up, and then we can discuss it, because as the New York State Education Department again, is holding kind of forums to discuss the school calendar issue. And we talked about, like, I know you had mentioned something, Victor, that they're really looking at are schools adhering to the rule of the required number of days? But they're only looking at a very small section of school districts. They're not looking at statewide school districts. So they're putting a resolution forward. Am I getting, I think I'm getting that right yet? So they're going to put a resolution forward, so when we see it, that's what that's about.
So what the public should do is beware that the State Education Department and the regions should be involved. They're going to be looking at not just the length of the day, but end and start times. And there is a body of research, you probably know about it, that talk about ideal beginning and end times for all students. And you'll see, for high school kids, it's a lot different than what we're doing. So we all need to get some more, we need to have some very serious conversations, and see where we want to go with that.
And then that jumps into the next thing, they're doing some research into school start times and the ability to change it. So just keep that somewhere in your head, that we might see surveys, et cetera, about that, because that's something that has to be done. You know, you can jump out ahead of it on your own, and, you know, be a pioneer, but it's going to involve a lot of legwork, you know, so that's going to be there. And then Steve, you sent an email to all of us regarding SALT, the tax deduction.
Sure. So there's a lot of things happening, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon your perspective. So it really means be diligent. Thank you. Other board remarks or comments?
I just wanted to, I went to the Veterans Concert at my school, which, this is not the first time I've gone. One of the best events that any school in the district...
Sure enough.
It's just fantastic. And I know Mrs. Taylor and the, I forget the band.
Gallacher, I mean, the Gluchy.
Yeah, I just, really, it was great. So I just hope they are commended for that, because I'm sure it's a lot of work to do.
It really is. High point of the year, though. Other board comments?
One thing that I had started to bring up before. Last year, I can't remember what, what started us to do this. We came up with a list of community agencies, like I was saying, the Elks, I think Rotary, Chamber of Brewster, Chamber, just a list of places between Town of Southeast Brewster and Patterson. And I know we tossed it around a little bit last year about how can we interact with those groups' members more? And we talked about possibly having some sort of reception. Is that something we want to pursue? Not for this year, but maybe early 2018. Is that something we want to pursue? If so, I'd be happy to, you know, start the legwork on that, and Mary Kay would too.
I think that was a volunteer. The record.
No, I think so. I think we all like the idea, and maybe the legwork involves, you know, how, reaching out to each organization and seeing, you know, how can we be involved in the work or whatever.
And some organizations might be organic, you know, I think like the VFW, say, if somebody, you know, I don't know if anyone does, but, you know, if someone was a veteran, then they're automatically in the VFW. That's an organic way of being involved, you know? So we would have to just talk as a group. Where are the natural fits? And then what else, what has to be kind of pushed in?
We could even do after-meeting, and then just do a brief work session, something that they still want to stay around for that piece, they could.
That'd be great.
But we could continue the conversation, not today. But I'm thinking, to what you brought up earlier, to add to that, the community outreach with a board person, you know, whatever that idea is, to kind of bring in, so we can maybe do a work session after any meeting.
Because I think it would be nice for the community to see, because the parents have seen JFK, so I'm going to bring up JFK, this would be a perfect time for the community, the taxpayers, see what, you know, where their money has gone, and what JFK looks like. And, you know, it'd be nice to engage them that way, you know, to start something.
Since most of them don't have children in the school district.
Right.
Yeah.
And then just to add something, Mary Kay, you reminded us of, on the agenda, we were talking about adding the committees that we are involved in, to make it more formal, to kind of really force us to have our...
So we don't forget, yeah.
So it could possibly be like, maybe board remarks, but have it, I've broken down with which, what we're involved in specifically, is there anything from last week? No, okay, fine, or whatever, and just listen, and maybe just go right there and just...
That's, I think that, just to keep it cohesive, and not, not us, you know, having to, not only saying that having to remember, but if we get a big discussion going, and then all of a sudden I forgot, you know, I mean, I had to write the notes down, so I wouldn't forget to bring up the LAC.
No, but I think it'll also show, when people look at the agenda, there's more that we do besides the meeting, there's all the committees that also have to do.
Audit, finance, whatever. And if some, you know, they cover, you know, if the audit committee meets, and Victor mentions the audit, we don't have to, okay, it's been done, there's our audit committee.
There's actually a lot of districts that do that, that I've spoken with, that, you know, they literally do a committee report. Brief, two seconds, or, you know, hope nothing happened this week, or this month, or whatever, depending upon what groups, you know, so.
So I was going to email, we talked about our board manual, and, so I was going to send an email out, and then because there's policy updates, I'm thinking it was the attorney, but actually, before it was the attorney...
You had it coming.
It's easy, I'll highlight the policy, the old policy numbers, it's just...
We're used to reading a lot.
It's two pages, but you don't have to read it all, just the highlights.
It's encouraging.
And then it becomes our official policy document. Two other things I wanted to add, whatever, comment on, we talked about, we're talking about learning walks with the Strategic Coherence Plan Committee. We also talked about it with the board, and I forgot, like, in the spring and fall and spring. So maybe we could tag on to some of those walk, I don't know, just to give us, because we're going to instead of doing a regular tour, we were turning into learning walks.
We'll have to, we'll have to train you first.
Because it really is important, I mean, the teachers who allow us to walk into their classrooms know that we've been trained. That's our, that's the key in.
Yeah.
Because it can look very intimidating when you walk in, and they might, you know, and little things like, you know, whether you can even write during your visit, your five-minute visit to each room is carefully guarded, because you can't. And then whether you can actually speak to children is also another rule that has to be followed. So it is just, it may sound benign, but it, we really do want to make sure that we maintain the ease that teachers have with any of us coming in, by ensuring them that we've been trained. But we, Shell and I would be happy to train you.
So, you know, and we could still do it, because I know in the past, we did, where it was like smaller groups, where it was like four or three of us, instead of all of us converging at one time.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, because there's definitely some things you need to see, which will be, definitely.
And then just the last comment that I had was thoughts on, I'm thinking maybe we should send out a letter, just explaining the idea behind a year pilot with the logo, and the way we'll check in with the community, or however that's going to look, so that we're clear on what's the plan for the rest of the later support.
Right.
Before.
And what was approved, and what was not.
Right, exactly.
Coming from the district, though, not the board. Yeah, right, yeah.
Share it, as you can see.
The highlights.
Okay. That's these board remarks. And the last topic, then, would be public remarks and information. Laura, yours, ladies and gentlemen. Hi, sir, how are you?
Write your name, and then it's a two-minute limit.
Right, okay. My name's Tim Murphy. I've been in the district for 41 years. Now, this is the third time I'm bringing up a survey of college freshmen. I wasn't here for the September meeting, but I was here two other years besides that, saying, let's get a survey now. The superintendent just talked about 287 seniors, and she's talking with them, and what the school is doing for them. I want to know what their, what their feeling is when they get out of Brewster High School. And I've been met with a lot of resistance. One of the suggestions I said was, if the board gives a scholarship before the kid can accept it, he's got to agree to be interviewed in his freshman year to find out what was his experience in Brewster High School, did it prepare him for the college that he's now presently attending? And that would be one thing, talk among yourself. The other thing is, I'm here because, and I, I don't have any kids in the school anymore, thank God, and the, the situation with the assistant principal in Brewster High School, I read in the local Freebie paper, he's on paid sick leave until December 31st. This is my, I'm saying it, I can't quote it verbatim, and then from January 1st to the end of the school year, he's going to be paid. Now, my one thing is, and on your paper, you put another guy in there to, I guess, fill the void that he had. So are we paying two salaries? And is that, I guess you can't tell me the reason, because it's a personnel thing, and nobody's going to talk about it. But is that with the teacher's contract that says, when he says, you know what, I'm going to resign, and you pay him out six months without, he's sitting home getting a check? Now, if that's with a contract that we've signed with them, so be it, that's it. But if it's not, then I'd like to know why.
You'll need to wrap it up.
Excuse me?
You'll need to wrap it up for the two minutes.
You can use mine. You can use my two minutes.
That's right. I had, I had 30 minutes of looking at this new thing that you're going to make. I had, I had 30 minutes of looking at this new thing that you're going to make, this logo, that obviously nobody in the district wants, except the people that are present here on the oval. But that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Other comments from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Yes. Give me a second. We have a motion. I need, we need to adjourn to that, we have a people's discuss. We have a meeting, I think, with our attorney to discuss Garden Street.
Okay.
Some updates on that. And another personnel discussion with the attorney as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the motion. Second, I'm Ms. O'Brien, all those in favor? We're off to executive session.